I will now call the City Workshop of Lake City on Budget to Order and we'll move right in. So, we've been called to order. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Jernigan.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Present.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Mayor Walker.
Present.
City Manager Rosenthal.
Here.
City Attorney Martin.
Here.
Chief Butler.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Lake City Council has opened its public meeting since nineteen sixty-eight. The city code has prohibited any person from making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks or becoming boisterous while addressing the city council. Yelling or making audible comments from the audience constitutes boisterous conduct. Such conduct will not be tolerated. There is only one approved manner of addressing the city council and that is to be recognized and then speak from the podium. As a reminder, persons are not to openly carry a handgun or carry concealed weapons or firearms while the governing body is meeting. Failure to abide by these rules of decorum will result in removal from the meeting. We'll go ahead and go, our one item for discussion is fiscal year budget twenty twenty-six. So, I'll now turn this over to Mr. Rosenthal or Ms. Taylor, would you prefer?
Yes, we're gonna turn it over to our Finance Director.
So, City Administration has-
Hey, speaking to, speak, pull it down a bit.
So, City Administration has prepared a couple of questions just to kind of get the council's input on what they would like to see for the next fiscal year budget. So, we'll start off with question number one. We've talked about it in the previous budget about increasing the ad valorem taxes. Would the council be interested in doing that for next year's budget?
Thank you for that question. Alright, so the first question is, would we consider increasing the ad valorem millage rate? I'll start, we'll just go left to right. Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
I thought about, no. And can I explain more?
Sure, yeah.
Right now, I do understand we have a lot of stuff that needs to be taken care of, but because things are the way they are as far as the new administration taking over, we don't know what's gonna be coming down the pipe. And I feel like if we add something more to the, to our constituents, it just wouldn't be good for a lot of people. So, I would have to say no.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Again, going from my left to right, the audience is right to left. I would also say, no, I'm more a proponent to variable taxes. So, if we could put one of those on the ballot, if we saw it necessary, and give the people a voice as to, if they wanted to, if we could paint the vision for them on what we were going to spend the taxes on and let them decide if they want to bear the cost. But that is, those are my thoughts. Mr. Carter?
I'll echo some of the same sentiment that Noah just said, or Mr. Mayor just said there, and but for now, I would say no.
Councilwoman Young?
And I share the same, and as I say, I'm still on the same path with you, that we look at other avenues to bring forth funds.
I think we have a lot of opportunity in annexations, in fees for user, and then developing some value for our constituents that could be monetized. Do you need any further answers on that?
That's good.
Alright.
The next question is about the fire assessment. We currently transfer nine hundred and twenty-five thousand over to the fire fund to balance their budget. We're in the middle of doing a fire assessment study to show what the cost and what the need is for the fire department. So, when that study is complete, we'll be presenting that to the council. But would the council be interested in increasing the rate if that's what the study calls for?
So, the question for Ms. Taylor, and there's an explanation within the agenda about fire assessments. The fire assessment last one up in twenty twenty-three is mandated every two years and to adapt to changes in fire assessment variables. The city has engaged in Banesh to conduct a comprehensive fire assessment study. It is essential that costs are fairly inequitably allocated among properties benefiting from these services in accordance with Florida statutes. Once the study is complete, Banesh will present the council with a range of proposed rates that will enable informed decision-making. These resources need to effectively protect our community, respond swiftly to emergencies, and maintain the vital infrastructure and equipment required for these essential services. Ms. Angie also outlined what moves around in our budget, which is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is taken from the general fund and put into the fire fund. Is that what she said?
Nine hundred and twenty-five.
Nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, okay. And fifty-six dollars I see now. And so, the question is, would you consider increasing the fire assessment rate? We're gonna go back the other way this time. Do you guys have anything to add before we answer this question?
I do not.
Okay, starting with you, Vice Mayor Young.
Okay. What I reflect back to a particular meeting where the fire chief, I don't know his exact words, but in other words, we were assured that they were gonna be able to carry their own. I don't know if anybody remember that other than myself, that they should be able to give back. Don't let me go find it. So, I would say I'm not inclined, but as of now, but if it's a diehard necessity, if there's no other way around it, then I would consider it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Carter?
We've hired someone to do a study to tell us what they think we ought to do. For the time being, I would say yes, this is not something that I'm going to say, no, I will not do. I'd like to see the results of that study. But yes, it is possible that I would support an increase in the fire assessment.
Thank you, Councilman Young, or Councilman Carter. My answer to this, again, I prefer variable taxes. However, I understand as a property owner that fire is, you know, structures catch fire. So, as a structure owner, you definitely know that you're going to be paying your fair share on providing that service. What really strikes me is the big fire sequence that we've seen in Southern California and the terror that wrecked LA with. So, I'm looking forward to the study. I would say, no, not without substantial data showing the need. But that's why we're having this study done, so that it shows the need, or shows what kind of need that we do have. So, if they say, if the experts say that we have a need, then it will be, at that point, what level do we address that need?
I'll go back with my previous answer for the last one. No.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harris. Councilman Jernigan?
Yes.
Perfect. Alright, thank you. Ms. Angie, would you like to move on to the next one? Number three?
Yes, sir. The next question would be, would you consider implementing a storm water fee? And Mr. Rosenthal could probably elaborate more what that would cover.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, we would, we could provide an expanded illustrative list of what the storm water fee would cover, but primarily it would cover areas that are now flooding. And we would try to use that storm water fee to adjust those areas and the surrounding areas around those areas so that it doesn't flood anymore. We would also try to do things to prevent a buildup of silt that could cause stormwater flooding. Stormwater is one of those things that you either do or you don't. If you don't, then you're gonna have flooding. If you do, then you can gradually ease your flooding away over years. Because it didn't happen overnight, we won't be able to cure it overnight, but we'll be able to cure it over time.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. The readout on this, I'll just read it for everyone's benefit. A storm water fee is an essential tool for managing the challenges posed by rainwater runoff and ensuring that the community's storm water infrastructure is properly maintained and upgraded. By charging a fee, municipalities can fund important projects that prevent flooding, reduce water pollution, and protect local ecosystems, ultimately making the community more resilient to storm-related challenges. We will again go in the order of the first question and start with you, Councilman Jernigan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris?
I was, I'm wondering if there is anything other that we can do other than all of these fees. For instance, I know they did a half-cent tax on something across the board and that was what, some of what helped us to get Nee Black School to rolling. So, I was wondering if we could do something like that, just do a half-cent tax on however they did that before. I thought that was a good idea, but I have so many people now that are struggling. And because we don't know how things are gonna be going when these terrorists or whatever take over, and I'm just gonna have to say no.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Again, very similarly to the fire assessment, I would say not without substantial data. I know that there's a massive need, especially there are certain parts of town that flood during rainy season. So, that has to be addressed, and it has to be addressed in a pretty timely manner, otherwise you get significant health concerns. But I would also prefer variable taxes, Councilwoman Harris was talking about. The only thing is, is that when those are put on the ballot, they tend to be shot down pretty aggressively. But it's the will of the people. If the will of the people says that we need to solve the issues of stormwater, then we need to solve the issues of stormwater. But I also like the idea of putting that on a ballot and really explaining it and letting them know. I think the reason why the half-cent sales tax passed for the Columbia County School Board, and it passed marginally, but the information was put out in such a manner that they educated the community on where they were already spending half-cent sales taxes. And so, what people found was that every time they ate dinner in Gainesville, every time they bought a shirt in Jacksonville, every time they went to these places and did these things, they were paying for the children and their education in those places, but they weren't doing it here in their own community. So, those taxes and fees are definitely in places in all the cities that I just mentioned and more, that our constituents already spend money in. And to understand that they're helping those communities alleviate their issues, but they're not willing to do it at home, I would say, put it to a variable tax decision and give them the opportunity. That's my thought. Councilman Carter?
I have a couple of quick questions. The proposed storm water fee, who would it be aimed at? Is this commercial, residential? Is it everybody? Is it geographic?
It'll be aimed at everybody, to every citizen of the city.
Not a commercial, like about a, I'm opening a business, I pay this fee, everybody.
Yes, everybody. Is it based on, sorry, is it based on, sorry to interrupt, permeable? I know the last storm water assessment attempt was based on permeable or non-permeable surface on a property. What I mean by that is concrete or asphalt.
Absolutely. You're talking the technical, the technical how-to would be absolutely, permeable surfaces would be looked at. But everything, everywhere would be looked at to alleviate the problem. Because stormwater is a funny thing. You can't fix the problem here, because it'll just roll over to the next lot. So, it's gotta be looked at as an overall issue and fixed as an overall problem.
Okay, so, to, a continuation of my question would be, would the idea be that the fee be variable depending on permeable or impermeable surface? Or the idea be that the fee would be the same across the board for every citizen?
Well, the fee can be anything you want. We're discussing right now whether or not we should even have a fee. So, what form the fee takes would be up to this board.
Okay.
Our staff will make suggestions.
Gotcha. Well, my answer on that question then would be that I'm not, I'm not saying now, same with the fire assessment, not saying now, absolutely not. But I would need some solid evidence for, put together for why. So, yes, maybe.
Thank you, Councilman Carter. Vice Mayor Young?
Yes, and mine is the same as others. I would say no today, but if it's shown where it's a diehard necessity, then I would consider.
Thank, thank you, Vice Mayor Young.
So, a follow-up question, Mayor? If the council is interested, would we want to do a study to see what those needs are?
When was the last time we?
For a study?
When was the last time we did a study?
I believe that was in two thousand seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen. Yeah, well, let's go down the road and Councilman Jernigan, to answer that question, would the council be open to a study on storm water assessment?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris?
Would that study cost us?
Yes.
Yep.
We'd probably have to do it anyway if we were gonna implement one.
We would, yes.
Alright. Okay, I heard from a couple of people that we were in deficit spending. Is this true?
Well, deficit spending, it just means that you're spending more money than coming in. We're in deficit spending in one area with the fire department, but the city is not in deficit. We're deficit spending with the fire department. That's something that has to stop, because what happens is it builds up over time. It becomes a cumulative problem. So, that's the deficit spending that I was talking about, and I'm the one said we was in deficit spending.
Right. I wasn't in on the, and because I didn't take office until November, but I do know that during the budgeting, it seems like a lot of money is being spent. And with that being said, if we're spending money and we're not bringing money in, we need to consider some of the things that we're trying to spend money on. Because it wasn't long ago, we spent money on somebody coming here talking about some, I can't even remember. But we're doing a lot of spending, and if we're in deficit spending, regardless of whether it's with the fire department or with the city, I don't think that's a good place to be.
Oh, I agree with you a hundred percent.
And money in.
Absolutely. I agree a hundred percent. But what staff was talking about is that we've been taking, and it's deficit spending. When we take money from another department, money that we shouldn't be taking, like in storm water, not storm water, but in our utilities, and we're taking that money and we're using it to fill gaps in the budget that shouldn't be there, that's deficit spending. And we've been taking that. Now, we probably not gonna have as much of that this year, because we've done some things to prepare for that, because we know that it's coming. So, we won't have the deficit spend this year, because we've generated some additional income in some other areas. But it's never a good idea for anybody to spend a million dollars that they shouldn't have to spend.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harris. Yeah, just to clarify, we do take in quite a bit. I would, I would be open to that study. I'd be curious how often, how often are those done? Like, what is, what is the lifetime? I mean, because it's, our top, our topography hasn't changed all that much. We have developed a little bit, but how, what is the shelf life of a storm water study?
Well, you really know that you need a storm water, you have storm water issues when you start having storm water issues.
Sure.
When it starts flooding.
And we have those.
And we have those.
And we had those in twenty seventeen, probably the same ones in twenty seventeen when we had that storm water assessment. So, is that storm water assessment, is it still good? I mean, who would determine that?
I don't think the storm water assessment would be good in that time. Every time you build another, you cover more ground, you're increasing to your storm water issues unless you allocate for that. That's why you'll see big companies when they come in, they actually, they build the structure, but then you'll also see them sometime build a retention pond. That's to take care of the storm water issues. And staff will have them do that when they come in if it's a big enough structure. So, you can't do that for a single-family house or in a neighborhood, so you have to take care of it on an overall basis, by taking care of the storm water issue within that particular area. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess I was more based on, is the study that we did in twenty seventeen still good? Or how, how much have we changed impermeable surface? I know that's a loaded, that's a hard-study question. That's why you do storm water assessments, right? Or storm water assessment studies, but.
I'm curious, when they did it in twenty seventeen, what did they end up doing to fix it? They didn't do anything? They just got the assessment and didn't do it?
Councilwoman, I have no idea. My tenure here is about ten months. So, maybe we can ask Finance if she's aware of anything.
Oh, Dee is right.
I believe, yeah, go, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, the last study, the council voted to not pursue it by resolution.
In twenty seventeen?
They, we had the study completed, and when it came to implementing it, it got canned. I think one of the issues was we needed to figure out a way to bill it. I think the idea was to go through the utility department, but that's not quite the way you would bill that, because the property owners, the person that's living in the house is, might not be the property owner. So, it kind of got stilled down and we moved on from it.
I believe that it was aimed at commercial properties only at that point, right?
I'm not sure.
There was a large upswell, there was a large community upswell in the chamber, I know, lobbied against it quite a bit.
There's a lot of lobbying against it.
Councilman Carter?
For now, I would be interested in seeing the twenty seventeen study in detail. I'd like to, you know, it's just several years ago. I don't think the impervious services and things like that have changed that much. I wouldn't mind seeing the data that that study found before saying absolutely yes to doing another study.
Okay, we can recover that document and send it to everybody.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Young?
Yes, I think that's very much necessary, but I'm wanting to know, is it, would we have to do another study? If so, yes, I would say yes.
Okay, perfect. Alright, that should answer number three. And any adjoining questions, Ms. Angie? You ready to go to the next one?
Yes, sir, number four. If each of the council, would you identify what are your top capital projects or infrastructure priorities? And how can we address those?
Alright. So, what the question was, and I would, is there a way to turn her microphone up? It's all the way up? It's just hard to hear over here, just because of the traffic. Yeah. So, let me, let me repeat the question. So, please identify the top capital or infrastructure priorities that you believe must be addressed in the coming budget year. And Vice Mayor Young, we're gonna start on your end, if that's okay?
I really didn't answer that one, because I had quite a few questions. But I would say, I believe we have so many complaints, I'm not gonna say we have so many complaints. There's a diehard need for our streets to be taken care of, not just repaired. We need repavement of a lot of streets, and I'm not just speaking about district team. I ride. And that, we're just, that's very much necessary. And also, I believe that's where, that would take care of some of our flooding issues.
Thank you, Councilwoman Young. Councilman Carter?
I agree with Councilwoman Young, roads and lights and code enforcement. I know code enforcement, it seems to be doing a better and better job, but keeping, keeping the city, including the roads and lights, well-lit, clean, and good-looking is a good way to encourage people to want to move here and do business here. So, those are the things that stand out to me. One thing for sure, though, sometimes in the past, we've done road improvements that are like a pour-over type of thing. And that, I would say, increases storm, well, seems to increase storm water issues. So, when I say roads, I do mean roads right. So, I wouldn't want to see a lot of that. But assessing, I know we've already started on some of those things, streetlights. I know we got a, we got a plan in place that hopefully we'll be able to start really quickly identifying when streetlights are out. But, you know, driving through certain sections of town and it's dark, that sort of, that sort of stuff invites wrecks and bad behavior. So, we want to get it lit up and looking nice. I'd say roads, lights, code enforcement.
Thank you, Councilman Carter. Likewise, neighborhood infrastructure, so roads and lights as well. I also had replacing in-town septic with sewer and helping folks with those projects. I know that there's a lot of state dollars that are being released this summer for such that we could go after. I think it would be important. I also had retrofitting some of the buildings that we have, like downstairs here, as well as the old Columbia Bank, into public use, particularly around the idea of a business incubator to help either young entrepreneurs or our youth either find space to participate together or build efficacy in launching businesses in something like a city-led incubator. These could generate funds and pay for themselves over time. Those are my ideas. Councilwoman Harris?
I would say streets and infrastructure, lighting, and I would like to have a homeless shelter here in Lake City.
Thank you. Councilman Jernigan?
Roads, streets, and sidewalks.
Perfect. Alright. Yep, Vice Mayor Young, yes, please.
And it's being worked on. We're looking into it, but crosswalks is very much needed. So, I want to add crosswalks, and we are working on that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Young. Alright, we're moving on to item number five. Angie, I think that looks like you brought in-
I've got some more mics.
There you go.
Now you can hear me.
Mic'd up.
Okay. So, question number five, are there any new programs or enhancements to existing services, such as parks, recreation, or social services, that you believe should be included to improve the quality of life of our residents?
We're gonna start with you this time, Councilman Jernigan?
No.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harris?
Recreation, I think we need to do something about, as far as recreation. We don't really have any for the children, so that would be my only ones right now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harris. For me- For me, uh, I also had youth activities, uh, whether that be through the public-private partnerships, uh, and things like after-school programs or, or city leagues. Um, also, uh, enhancements to parks for use by residents and to, uh, deter permanent public camping. Mr. Carter?
Uh, yes, I have, um, uh, I like our stationary, um, areas for recreation. You know, I, I really like the plan that we, we started working on, uh, a couple of months ago, uh, for the expansion of Young's Park. Um, so I'd like to continue pursuing grants, um, and funds to make that a reality. Also, want to look into what may be done. Again, I don't, I'm not interested necessarily in spending a lot of money on this, but, uh, Campbell Park at Lake Montgomery, at the moment, it's effectively a big empty rectangle of, of dirt and a few trees. We did, we just got the, the fishing pier out there. We got a nice new, uh, fences and everything like that. I'd like to do a little bit of, um, looking into things that park could be. Um, talked to a few different, uh, uh, citizens and things like a community dog park, which I know a lot of people have been asking for, for a long time. I'd like to see what kind of rules, safety, all those sort of things that would be necessary for that, um, perhaps. Putting, but again, something that is fairly low and, low in cost. Or, um, taught to other folks, like a small disc golf thing, have a couple of disc golf holes out there, similar to Heritage Park in Live Oak, something like that. But, you know, generally, uh, one of the reasons we did the changes and the infrastructure changes that we did around that lake there, uh, was to try to cut down on some of the, the crime and the issues. We had people sleeping in the park and, and other illicit activities. Um, so, uh, uh, from my experience, those sort of things, nature abhors a vacuum. If it's a big empty hole, people are going to want to go in there and, and do stuff. So we need to replace bad activities in that space with good ones. But again, I, I'd like it to be something that is somewhat stationary, not something that's necessarily staffed. So dog park, frisbee, disc golf, things like that. But I'd like to maybe look into a couple of things that we might could, could do at a minimal cost to make that park, uh, usable for, uh, the citizens.
What park are you referring to?
Campbell Park, the park next to Lake, Lake Montgomery. Where, the fishing pier?
The new pier. Thank you, Councilman Carter. Uh, Vice Mary Young?
Okay, um, programs, I would like to see more senior programs. I don't know that we have much of anything for our seniors. Um, I know there's some bingo going on, um, and, um, programs, most definitely. I would like to see some enhancements on our parks, and we've been visiting the parks to kind of see what, you know, what, what's the priority. And, um, recreation, and I know that's, I'm going to say it's on its way. We've been reaching out to, um, businesses, so hopefully somebody will say, yeah, we'll come to Lake City.
Thank you, Vice Mary Young. All right, Ms. Angie, want to move us into item number six?
Number six, what incentives would you support that foster economic de-development such as incentivizing local businesses and attracting new investments?
Thank you, uh, Vice Mary Young?
Um, I'm really not sure about that one. I'm really not sure about that one. Um, I know we, we have been calling, and you can get more information from Mr. Rosenthal on attracting, um, new in-investments, and, um, I think he's doing an awesome job with that. So there's always room for improvement, um, but I don't, I'm not sure about the incentives. I know we need to set some type of incentives, um, to draw these businesses. But that's, that's about it.
Perfect.
That I have to say on that.
Thank you, Vice Mary Young. Councilman Carter?
Uh, yes, I think, I know we've already been for the, for the last little while now, been pretty good about and diligent with, uh, pursuing annexation, um, cleaning up some of our, our, our lines, uh, and, uh, bringing some of the areas that kind of makes sense to be part of the city, literally actually into the city. Um, in doing that, I think that'll give us some kind of, uh, new frontiers, if you will. So one thing I'd be interested in seeing would be, uh, looking into areas where we can extend, uh, and I know we're already doing that, uh, uh, um, on 47 now, but where we can extend utilities to new areas for new development. Um, obviously, you know, uh, putting together some sort of, uh, uh, you know, tax abatement for someone's going to be, be do, do large projects. Um, and then also maybe partnering with, uh, organizations like the Chamber of Commerce to help, um, poll both the business and local community on, on what the community itself would like to see us, uh, try to bring here. Um, so those are just a few of those ideas.
Thank you, Councilman Carter. Um, I also had, uh, tax abatement, um, in the, if a, a property is, um, improved, it, it's no cost to us, it's no cost to the taxpayer to give a tax abatement over time, uh, and then let that gradually step up, uh, and it only leads to, to value creation, uh, for, again, our, our taxpayer, us and the company that would decide to use it. I would actually, I'd like to, uh, look at radial tax abatements. I don't know if that's, that's a possibility, but identifying opportunity zones, uh, within our city uh, that we could offer more abatement than others, right? Um, to incentivize, um, the, the elimination of food deserts, um, and, and things like that so that all of our taxpayer, or all of our taxpayers and constituents are being served on an equal level. Um, I also, uh, like the idea that Councilman Carter, uh, threw out of, of extending our utilities out. Um, a lot of times, these companies are looking for where can they go the fastest and, and, uh, be to market the quickest. So part of that is making sure that they can get a hookup to sewer and water. Um, so I think that that would be a, a huge thing and, and laying out a five, 10, 15-year plan on where we can reach feasibly, uh, by ourselves, and then where we can reach feasibly, uh, with, uh, state allocations. And then, uh, the potential of, of, in terms of helping, uh, homegrown businesses and, and doing something like a, an entrepreneurial incubator here, uh, within the city, doing, uh, secured lending programs of some kind. I don't, I've, I've never worked with those, but, uh, I've been reading about them and they're very interesting. So those are my ideas. Councilwoman Harris?
I would say annexation and maybe, um, tax cuts in the beginning, and it gradually goes on to be what it needs to be.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harris. Councilman Jernigan?
Um, I would just, uh, observe, uh, well, uh, what, what I would like to see is this, uh, just obstruct the, uh, city, city manager to be creative, uh, and, and the staff that we have here. Just be creative and come up with a, a great plan for us.
Perfect. All right, those are all the questions. Um, does anybody have any discussion or questions for staff? All right, that's our, that's our workshop, folks.
Nope.
Nope.
Comment, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry about that, folks. There was nobody in the room when, when we first started. So we do have, uh, I will open up public comment for anybody who would like to speak. Please just, I don't have any, any cards, so line up at the podium if you don't mind. Uh, it's coming. It's coming. Give me just a moment.
Hit your sound.
Green, you've got the glowing mic.
Thank you, Mr. Matt Glenn, 11, ooh, boy, this sounds good. I don't even hear any of that.
Increase your taxes for that, though.
1156 North East Baskin Norris Drive. I didn't, I wasn't in time to hear the first question about the, uh, property tax. I'm assuming that there was a no from everybody, but whether it was or not, let me just say that as a taxpayer, as a citizen, I am adamantly opposed to any increase in property tax, uh, without some justification. You know, uh, if there's a, if there's a need, then I think the citizen should be, it should be explained to the citizen why we're doing this, not because, uh, I'm opposed to property tax increase without some justification. In fact, I'm opposed to any type of fee increase without some study, some justification. You know, if you can justify it, then the public will accept it. I, I go back to the Jacksonville back in the day, they had this, uh, one Jacksonville, and it was a tax. And how they sold, they talked about Bella Jacksonville, the Bella Jacksonville. For over a year, they talked about Bella Jacksonville. By the time people got ready to vote for it, they didn't even realize it was a tax. They just, oh, maybe we'll have better sidewalk, we'll have better streets, we'll have better drainage, so people voted for it. It was a good thing. Same thing with the school here. People voted for that half-cent sales tax. Why? Because they was educated to the point they think they know the need for the school. So US City Councilmen have to do the same thing, in my view. You got to educate the public, the city manager in particular, and educate the public in terms of what their needs are. And so unless there's a need for increase in our property taxes, I don't see the need for doing it. Primarily because we already suffering as citizens. The least of us, people who rent property, why they don't, they're not paying property taxes. But I've been told by some landlords that if they have a property increase, and if it's in a significant impact, they're going to pass it on. Now, they got one property, that's one thing, but if they own 10, 12, 15 properties, then that's an increase in their, in their cost. They're going to pass it on to the citizen, and that's to the least of those who can afford to pay it. I know people say, well, they're only $20, $30, and I go back to my, all my, my regular spiel. The person on, on a fixed income that gets $800,000 a month, a senior citizen, the grand who, that's all they got coming, that $30 can mean a loaf of bread a month for a whole year. There's some people in their grand chair come to the house and say, granted, you got $2? They said, baby, wait till my check come, and they serious, they ain't got no money. And so when you talk about raising taxes, I understand that you're not talking about just on the wealth. You're talking about impacting the least of us. And so I want to be the voice of those who won't come up here and speak for themselves, but they, but they, they understand they cannot afford it. So, uh, as you move forward, uh, I would be opposed to, and I'm just one person, but my voice would be a, a serious no against any kind of property tax increase. And I would be supportive of some assessment, uh, increase if it's justified, and it need to be explained. You know, if, if you need it, if, if the fire department need a, an increment in assessment, show it to us. You know, then, then I'm not just opposed to any type of assessment, stormwater in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Lilker?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I drove up here tonight, Stu Lilker, Columbia County Observer, to see how this new audio system works. Yeah, some good, some bad. I don't know how much money the town, the city spent, 35, 40,000. But I watched Jake Hill up there for years. Maybe it's that microphone? Because I'm sitting right there, I can barely hear Ms. Harris. I could be able to hear Jake Hill. I tried to hear the finance director. It was almost impossible to hear her tonight. And yet it took 45 minutes for whoever's in that back room to realize that nobody could hear the finance director. And, Your Honor, it took you 45 minutes to say, can't hear you. So I don't know how well-spent this money was. Clearly, Ms. Harris, and I see the way she's sitting there, I know something about audio, is she should be able to be heard on that microphone. She shouldn't have to put that microphone in the back of her throat to be able to be heard. I can hear Mr. Jernigan all the time, and he's just about as far from the microphone as Ms. Harris is. But I don't know, anybody's going to do a cost-benefit analysis. You have an MBA, the city manager has an MBA. This was promised 10 months ago when the city finally came to the realization after years that some of the city councilmen or the city attorney could not be heard. And yet tonight, you come here after spending all this money, and, uh, some of the people you can barely hear. You got a 12-hour visit from somebody in a booth somewhere coming up with a microphone so that the finance director can be heard. Maybe you guys can have this straightened out by the next meeting? And if it's not, because I never understood the bidding process on this, but this bid, if any of you know, and look at the procurement policies of this city, this bid came through a bid in Texas. And I guess the group is somewhere up north that did this, or somewhere. And I've yet to figure out how city purchasing could approve a piggyback bid from a board of education in Texas. I mean, I never saw that before. I understand state contracts and piggybacking in the state of Florida. But I've spoken to finance people and, and purchasing people, and nobody understands how a bid can be from out of state and you piggyback on that. Needless to say, this system still needs some work, Your Honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lilker. Anybody else? Well, uh, with that, we will go ahead and close this workshop. Thank you all. We'll see you at 6:00 for our regularly scheduled city meeting.